Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? As all members have received a copy of the call for tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Welcome to the December meeting of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM Moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes, well, we have two sets of minutes to deal with. We'll first take up the minutes of our regular October meeting, which was held on October 22, 2007. As all members have received a copy of those proposed minutes, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. Are there any suggested changes to those October 22 minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes of the October 22 meeting are adopted upon unanimous consent. Let's now move to the October 29 minutes. This is our special meeting. Bob Brady, Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening. On page two of the minutes, in the last line of the resolved clause, the word "FOR," was omitted between the words "plan" and "teachers."
Thank you. Is there any objection to that proposed amendment? Hearing none and absent objection, that amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Are there any further suggested corrections to the minutes of our special meeting on October 29? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes of the October 29 meeting as amended are hereby adopted upon unanimous consent. Now, there are some materials up front on the stage. If any district chairs have not come up to collect copies for their members. One is the -- hang on. One is the substitute resolution that is being offered tonight on the OPEB resolution. And there, I understand there are copies for all of our members. The other is a proposed resolution thanking the members of our special committee on the Nathaniel Witherell. And I don't have copies for everyone, so if the chairs could just take, say, a copy of four, you know, half the number of members that they have, then everyone would at least be able to share and see what that's the language on that when it comes up. Valerie Stouffer, Chair of District 7.
Whereas David P. Agnew, a member of this body for three terms, passed away on November 13th, 2007, at the age of 82, and whereas he served District 7 with distinction from 2000 until 2005, we are recognizing David's service and contributions. David represented our district on the Health and Human Services and the Land Use Committees. His expertise in the areas of open space, municipal planning, and his passion for conservation made him an invaluable member, not only of the Land Use Committee but also of the Greenwich Land Trust, of which he formerly served as president. Recently, he headed the Land Trust Acquisitions Committee of this important organization that is dedicated to preserving land permanently in its natural state for the benefit of current and future Greenwich generations. David was a true citizen of Greenwich. As a 60-year resident of our town, he was a devoted and active participant in many aspects. Among the organizations to which he dedicated his time and expertise were Greenwich Hospital, the Bruce Museum, and Audubon of Connecticut, on the board of which he was serving at the time of his death. David had a distinguished life, a graduate of Deerfield Academy and Princeton University. He served during World War II in Italy with the American Field Service. His business career included the Greenwich Time, RCA, Diversi Graphics, and Stanwych Investments. The RTM has lost a very special member who, when word went out last summer that District 11 had vacancies, answered the call. He circulated his petition in the new neighborhood to which he had moved. David worried he was not known among the District 11 voters and that he might not win enough votes to become a member again. He need not have worried. The voters appreciated his cheerful personality, the twinkle in his eye, and his known expertise and experience. David Agnew proved to be one of the most popular candidates on the ballot. He was thrilled with the outcome and was looking forward to rejoining this body. The members of District 11 have asked me to express how much they had all looked forward to David's guidance on all the important issues, especially in the field of land use. He will be missed. Greenwich has lost a citizen who served us all in the best tradition of the volunteer representative town meeting. Now therefore, be it resolved that the entire membership of the Greenwich Representative Town Meeting join Districts 7 and 11 in honoring David P. Agnew's exemplary and productive life, and further extend our sympathy to the Agnew family and especially to his wife, Jeb Allen Agnew, who accompanied David to RTM meetings and sat in the back of this auditorium watching the proceedings as the hands of the clock frequently rotated past midnight and the speeches continued and continued. Be it further resolved that this resolution be set forth in the minutes of the meeting and that a proper copy thereof be prepared by the town clerk and sent to David's family.
Will the members please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of David On behalf of the RTM, I would like to extend our warmest welcome and congratulations to our new First Selectman, Peter Tessie, who is asked for a moment to address the body.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I want to first thank you for the many years working together. I look forward to the next several years working with you in a new capacity. I want to congratulate all of you on your election or reelection, and again, look forward to the next two years. I wanted to take a moment this evening to update you on several matters currently before the town. The first being water conservation. As you may know, reservoir levels for the Aquarian Water Company's Greenwich system remain just below 27 percent, keeping the town of Greenwich and several other surrounding towns under a drought advisory. Typically, this time of year, water levels are at 70 percent. According to the drought response plan adopted by the town in 1995, once reservoir levels fall to 25 percent, a drought watch will be issued and all the town's services will put in place mandatory restrictions. Along with Greenwich, this includes the town and city of Rye and the villages of Rye Brook and Portchester. Representatives from the towns and the Water Company will continue to meet every two weeks until the drought advisory is lifted. Now, this watch and this issue is spearheaded up by Denise Savage-Joe, our Conservation Director. And all of you should know that Denise has been very diligent in not only monitoring the situation but in communicating with the various other towns and Water Company officials. Tomorrow actually will be the first meeting that I attend as First Selectman in the First Selectman's office on this subject. The statistics that I provided to you do not include the precipitation we received over the weekend, so hopefully that has provided us additional resource and will ease us out of this bogey of 25 percent that will trigger the watch. Item number two, Capital Improvement Projects Committee. I've spoken of the need to increase the transparency of the capital improvement project process, both as BET Chairman and of course during the campaign as a candidate for First Selectman. I am going to request that each arm of our town government, the RTM, the BET, and Board of Ed, select one of their members to act as an ex-official member of the CIP Committee. It is my hope this small measure will help to broaden understanding and support for this plan and again, increase transparency. Item number three, nominations to boards and commissions. There are currently 33 nominations pending before the Board of Selectmen. The new board has begun to interview incumbents and will act this Thursday on approximately one-third of the nominations. Given the fact that two-thirds of the Board of Selectmen is new, and I certainly want to welcome Lynn Lavery, our Selectman and my colleague here this evening, since Lynn and I are new, we want to take the time and care to properly review these nominations. We recognize that creates somewhat of a burden for you given the number that are up, but we also know you'll understand our desire to fulfill our obligations to properly interview candidates before we submit them to you. Item number four, Hamilton Avenue School. I am taking an active role in seeing to it that this project begins to move as further delay continues to have an impact on our school district's focus. There will be an interim appropriation submitted to you by the Building Committee, which should complete this project. At a later date, the Building Committee will address issues between the contracted parties and reconcile any differences. But our first priority is to see to it that this project is completed by the end of the school year. Number five, and the final item, Town Budget 0809. Town departments have submitted their budget requests as of the December 1st date per our charter. I will begin reviewing these budgets over the next several weeks and sit down with town departments to discuss them in further detail. Generally speaking, the outlook for the budget is good. There are some challenges which we will have to address during the course of these meetings with department heads. Again, I want to thank you for the time accorded to me this evening and reiterate that I look forward to working with all of you over the next several years.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Fellow members and guests, this should be a very special session. The end of a term for the RTM, the honoring of departing members, and the infusion of new blood. Sure, that happens every other year, but we're also ushering in a new administration, and it's even rarer to be doing so during the revision of the plan of conservation and development. We have some really important business to take care of tonight, including a sense of the meeting resolution pertaining to the POCD, so my purpose is not to cause a distraction but instead to provide some clarity as we address that item. As chief instigator and co-facilitator of the Downtown Consensus Group Initiative, I feel it's important for all members of this body to know that the DCG completed its initial study and presented its report on November 19th at the public forum for the POCD that was focused on the Central Business District. A number of you were there and received the report. Some of you commented on the recommendations and some offered others. The DCG feels it accomplished its initial mission of bringing input to the POCD, representing consensus from various stakeholder communities, and did so based on a wealth of information about the CBD that it gathered during 16 meetings held over a period of six months. This input includes recommendations of essential objectives of a comprehensive plan for the CBD, a plan which the RTM has clearly called for. The Consensus Group is pleased that the P&amp;Z and its consultants welcomed this input and hopes that all RTM members support its recommendation that a formal comprehensive plan for the Central Business District be undertaken sooner rather than later. The Consensus Group encourages feedback from all members of this body and urges you to participate in the final two POCD hearings scheduled for this week and next. The Consensus Group Initiative was an effort to provide direction for planning and the future of the CBD, to get everyone on the same page. But let's put that aside tonight so we can devote our full attention to another set of recommendations aimed at improving our overall town planning processes. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DiMarco. At this time, I would recognize Tom Byrne, our moderator, from District 6.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I rise tonight to offer a resolution of recognition and thanks to the members of the Special Committee on Nathaniel Witherell. That committee was appointed back in the summer of 2003, and as you heard at our meeting last, our regular meeting in October, the committee has now finished its work. It submitted its final report and asked to be discharged. And I am happy to report to them that I am now discharging them from their services, but I wanted to offer some words because this was an extraordinary effort that was undertaken by 14 members of the RTM. And it came about because there was a special need recognized. We knew that the Board of Nathaniel Witherell was planning a major reconstruction. The original plan was to construct a new facility at a cost of at least $45 million. And we knew we would be asked at some point to appropriate that money. And knowing that we couldn't take that up in the ordinary course where we get the call a few weeks before our meeting and then are asked to vote, we knew we had to be proactive and begin our review well in advance of that request for an appropriation. So three of our committees held public meetings and public hearings on the issue back in May of 2003, and those were the Budget Overview Committee, our Finance Committee, and Health and Human Services. And as a result of those meetings, the chairs, along with the members of those committees, realized that the task was larger than a single standing committee could undertake. And so those three committees jointly proposed to the moderator that a special committee be appointed to do this work, and brought forward the names of 14 volunteers from those three committees. I then appointed the special committee based on that recommendation and appointed those who had volunteered from the three committees. And I have passed around a resolution tonight that sets out the history from that date. The committee went off and held numerous meetings and public hearings, visited nursing facilities both within Connecticut and outside Connecticut, leading up to their first report that contained numerous recommendations that we then considered at our September 2004 meeting. And the RTM adopted a sense of the meeting resolution that contained the recommendations of the committee. Thereafter, the committee suggested that it was interested in continuing to oversee how those recommendations were implemented. And the moderator then issued a new charge, and most of the members, there were some of the original members who had retired from the RTM or who had pursued other interests, but the bulk of the original 14 members then continued from that point until this year, continuing to follow the plans of the Board of Nathaniel Witherell. And we ultimately adopted a sense of the meeting resolution in April of this year where we encouraged the operation of Nathaniel Witherell to continue under town department supervision. And the committee now has issued its final report. So I would now like to offer the resolution that has been passed around. Hopefully, you have an opportunity to see it. The whereas clause is simply recite the history as I just summarized, and I'd like to read the resolution itself. Now therefore, be it resolved that the RTM wishes to acknowledge the tremendous service rendered to the RTM and to the town by the individual members of the Special Committee on the Nathaniel Witherell. And be it further resolved that the RTM extends its deep appreciation to all of the members of the Special Committee for their service above and beyond the call of duty, for the time they committed to the work of the Special Committee and the special talents they brought to the work of the committee. And be it further resolved that the RTM acknowledges the exceptional leadership provided to the Special Committee by its Chairman, Robert J. Richardson of District 10. And be it further resolved that this resolution of recognition and thanks to the members of the Special Committee be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that a suitable copy be presented by the town clerk to each of the following members of the Special Committee: Robert Richardson, Chairman; Fred DeCaro, Vice Chairman; Robert Brady; Linda DeScife; Patricia L. Sasser; Gina Higbee; Randall Huffman; Arlene Lamazo; Mary McNamee; David Melick; Gerald Pollak; Stephen Solar; Bob Tuthill; and Nancy Weisler. Madam Chairman, I so move.
This being a procedural matter, no record vote is necessary. We can take a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried, and the resolution will go for it.
All right. That now brings us to the call for tonight's meeting. And given that there are only nine items on the call, we will not have any special calendars tonight. We will simply proceed in numerical order. So that brings item number one before us. May we have the resolution on that item? Al Kaba, Director of Labor Relations.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, good evening. Resolve that the sum of $30,000 for the fiscal year 2007-2008, being the same, is hereby appropriated to carry out the terms of the negotiated two-year collective bargaining agreement between the Town of Greenwich and the Laborers International Union of North America Local 136, AFL-CIO. Further resolve that the Representative Town Meeting of the Town of Greenwich hereby approve such provisions of the agreement, if any, which may be in conflict with any charter provisions, special act, ordinance, rule, or regulation of the Town of Greenwich in the Meeting of Connecticut General Statutes, Section 7-474. Thank you.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item one has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this? Beginning with the Labor Contracts Committee and its Chairman, Joan Caldwell.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting. Item number one this evening is the last of the contracts to be negotiated in the '07 year. It is the contract between the Town of Greenwich and the Laborers International Local 136, representing approximately 190 full-time employees, 18 middle, 18 part-time employees, and they are our middle management employees in the town. The cost sheet, or rather, the explanatory comments that you got are very detailed. They include everything. They will do a much better job, I'm sure you've read them, than I can do here tonight, and they're very complete. I would call your attention to the fact that the general wage increase is 3.25 percent, which is in line with what we have given other groups throughout the last year or two. That 3.25 percent is what each employee will get, plus steps if the employee is not at the maximum of his range. There are in addition health savings. The increase, there will be an increase in COPE as of January '08 for people of the, in the POS program, PPO, excuse me, PPO, Preferred Provider Service. And 15 percent to those in POS, the Health Systems and Health Net. In July, there will be an increase in the POS that will represent a difference between 85 percent of the POS and the total of the PPO. Now, that's a lot of alphabet. What it boils down to is that we are tightening up on the increases in our health insurance premiums. There is also in this program a credit for retirees hired on, the credit for retirees' healthcare. For those employees employed after November 1st, '97, is being replaced by a health savings account. This is very important. It's the first step in that direction that we've taken, and we're probably going to see more of these. The town also eliminated retiree health, retiree life insurance. There was an attempt to make a pension change in this policy, and we were not successful. What we wanted to do was to get the defined contribution in to replace the defined benefit for those employees who were new to the town or would be new to the town. It didn't succeed. It is going to arbitration, probably in January, and we can expect to see some sort of a decision from the arbiters in March. Now, you know, the First Selectman negotiates six contracts. He negotiates with GMEA, that's our white-collar workers, secretaries, the clerks. He negotiates with Lyuna, which is this group, middle management, with the public health nurses, with the Teamsters, who man the parks and drive the trucks, and DPW, for the fire and the police. All of these contracts have different termination years. They don't all come up in the same year, so you're constantly getting contracts every year to vote on. The RTM customarily sees about two or three settlements a year, and because you see only two or three a year, it's kind of hard to keep track of where the town is going and in whose court the ball actually rests. This contract is an example of the big picture. The GWI is within the range that we pay other bargaining units in the town and have paid for the last two or three years. It is not inflationary. For the past two decades, effort has been made to keep our GWI reasonable and within the range of what other towns were paying and to not be a pace setter. We've had mixed results. Most times, we've done a very good job. In the very beginning, I don't think we were quite so successful. For the past 15 years, for your information, the average annual increase in any year has ranged between 2.61 percent and 3.25 percent. For the past 10 years, the town has been focusing its attention on fixed expenses as well, and they're a part of the contract. It's the health and life insurance, it's the pension benefits. This contract provides for a greater sharing of health premiums. The town has for some time been reducing the increase in its insurance by offering new programs that maintain a good level of care. Now is beginning to focus its attention on the pension. Though this contract does not contain a provision for a defined contribution, we did try to get it, and we are going to arbitration in an attempt to get it. And if in fact, we're not successful, it is the opinion and the advice of the Labor Contracts Committee to the First Selectman and the town's negotiator that we keep right after it. Eventually, we will get a defined contribution plan for new hires in all of our units. We have it for two units, Teamsters and GMEA, which represent collectively about 50 percent of the employees in this town. This is the big picture, and it's what you need to be aware of. And sometimes, I think I failed to tell you that. Our committee is very pleased with this contract. We voted four in favor, none opposed. I should add, so that you understand the four, there were five members present, but at the time that we met, the employees were also meeting to vote on the contract, and because there had been no vote, we wouldn't do anything. Just before we adjourned, we were advised that the employees had ratified the contract, so we voted, but by that time, one of our members had been forced to leave.
Thank you. Greg Fruman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Joan stole my report, word for word. I love following Joan because there's absolutely nothing that anyone could possibly add. She does a wonderful job. Town Services met on this item. Al Kaba presented. We voted 10-0-0 with Districts 2 and 11 absent. We voted 10-0-0, with Districts 2 and 11 absent. That's all.
Thank you. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
I should have come before Greg, because I did have one other item to add. Similarly, all the items that Joan presented, as was presented to our committee, we voted 9-0-0 in favor, with Districts 4, 6, and 11 absent. Joan was present and voted on behalf of her delegate district in District 10. The only item that was also noted in our meeting was that the primary cause of the change in request for this appropriation had to do with changes in overtime pay for exempt employees, where they will be paid time and a half for overtime that exceeds once they hit six hours beyond their normal work hours. Again, there were no additional changes in, our vote was 9-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item one. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number one, and proceed to poll your delegation? Item number two now comes before us. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, resolved that the following ordinance establishing a municipal fine for inland wetlands violations be approved. It is as it appears in the call.
Thank you. Since that's offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee, it does not require a second. We'll now take up the reports. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Moderator, this item first came to the RTM in December 2006, when the RTM voted to refer this matter back to the Legislative and Rules Committee. As you can see from the timeline that is in your explanatory comments, the Wetlands Agency, our committee, and the Law Department met on three occasions to revise the ordinance necessary to obtain Legislative and Rules nearly unanimous consent to this item. I want to commend the Wetlands Agency and the Law Department for their patience and willingness to work through some compromises and work through some problems that we had with the language in the ordinance. Without belaboring all of the details of how this ordinance will work, it does provide, pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 22A, 42G, for a fine of up to $1,000 for violations of the wetlands ordinances. Those fines can be imposed against contractors and homeowners who are having work done on their property by contractors. The wetland came to our agency and our committee and expressed to us that they currently have no effective remedy for contractors in this town who repeatedly do work without first obtaining the appropriate permits, or who do work in violation of wetlands regulations. This will provide them with another tool in their toolbox, which will be aimed at imposing fines on some of those contractors who are repeat offenders of the wetlands regulations. It is also hoped that a fine, the maximum of which is $1,000, and according to the way our ordinance is written, could be higher if the state regulation allows for a higher fine in the future. And the publication of the names of these offending contractors in the newspaper will have a deterrent effect on these repeat offenders. The ordinance also provides for the right of the agency to fine homeowners, and while the agency doesn't foresee that a fine would often be imposed upon a homeowner unless they believe the circumstances would show that the homeowner had knowingly violated the wetlands regulations. The one concern that our committee continued to have with this ordinance was we were concerned about how it was going to be applied and if it would be applied fairly. We don't know who the hearing officer is going to be yet. That's going to be somebody who can't be an agency employee or a past agency employee or a member of the Police Department, but it is still an unknown at this point, so our committee saw a fit to impose a sunset clause in this ordinance, which will provide that the ordinance will cease to have effect in December 31 of 2009 unless there's affirmative action to bring it back. And it is our hope that in the interim, the wetlands people will provide us with the number of violations and the amounts of the fines, so we'll be in a position to continue with this if it's being administered appropriately. We did have some minor changes, and at the appropriate time, Mr. Moderator, I would make some language changes. And then our vote after the ordinance was revised by way of these scriven as errors was 11 in favor, none opposed, with one abstention.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members of town meeting, the Land Use Committee took up this item at our meeting last Monday evening. It was presented to us by Bob Klausie, a wetlands compliance officer, and Doug Wells, Chairman of Legislative and Rules, was present at our meeting. It is before us, from the Legislative and Rules Committee, as you know. This ordinance, ordinances like it, are based on enabling legislation at the state level. And similar ordinances have been adopted by various towns throughout the state, including three nearby towns. Wilton adopted the ordinance in 1997, Westport in 2000, and New Canaan in 2001. And no decision in any of these towns has been overturned on appeal. In other words, the ordinance appears to have worked well in those towns. Legislative and Rules added this sunset clause, as Mr. Wells just explained, pursuant to which the ordinance would automatically be repealed in two years' time unless it was reenacted. And the explanos state, as Mr. Wells just said, that this was added because of concern that the inland wetlands agency might use the ordinance arbitrarily or unfairly. This seemed to members of the Land Use Committee to be an unusual reason for a sunset clause, which is more typically used where legislation is untested. Mr. Wells, at our meeting, stated that the committee also wanted to reconsider the ordinance after the town had had some experience with it. In any event, the members of the Land Use Committee were concerned, at the length of time it has taken the inland wetlands agency to get this important enforcement tool to the point of enactment. And there's a timeline in your explanos which indicate that they began trying to get this ordinance into the form that it's in tonight, into a form that could be enacted as early as 2004. It's taken Legislative and Rules a full year to get back to us after it was referred to them last December. Let me say that that is not intended as criticism of Legislative and Rules. They've, in my personal view, done a very good job of improving the statute, the ordinance, but it took a long time. And we were concerned that the ordinance might expire and cease to be available to inland wetlands if it had to come back to us to be reenacted. Accordingly, we voted unanimously to offer a motion this evening to delete the sunset clause. Bear in mind that the ordinance can be repealed, it can be amended, it doesn't have to just cease to be in effect for corrective measures to be taken. Following the committee reports, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer that motion on behalf of the Land Use Committee. With the amendment, the Land Use Committee approved this item 12-0-0.
Thank you. Let's get the changes from Legislative and Rules first. Mr. Wells?
There are a total of five changes, which are as follows. On page two of the call, under the definitions section, the second paragraph begins with the word "director" in quotes. At the end of that sentence, after the word "agency" should be inserted the word "staff", so it'll read "for the supervision of the agency staff." The second change is on page four of the call, under sub-paragraph C, "admission of liability by payment of fine," about two-thirds of the way down. At the end of sub-paragraph one, where it now reads, "checks should be made payable to the Town of Greenwich," that should be "shall be made payable." Delete "should," insert in this place "shall." On the next page, in the paragraph E, the second line, which ends in "shall be held not less than," and then there's the number 15, the word "15" should be inserted, and then the 15 should be in parentheses, so that it's consistent with the next line, 30, being spelled out, as well as 30 in parentheses. At the top of page six, it reads now "are is," is is actually drawn through, but that should be deleted, the word "is" in the top of page six. And finally, under the public notifications provision on that same page, the words "of issuance" in the first line should be deleted, so that it reads "notice of payment of a fine pursuant to this article," and the rest of it is as it appears.
All right. That is a motion to amend offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee and does not require a second. Do we need to review those proposed changes? We can adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to those changes outlined by Mr. Wells? Hearing none and absent objection, those amendments are adopted upon unanimous consent. Mr. Blumer?
On behalf of the Land Use Committee, I move that the final clause of the proposed ordinance, which is captioned "sunset clause," be deleted.
Thank you. Once again, a motion offered on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second. Discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to amend item two. Mr. Wells?
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the committee, our thinking was that this sunset provision was, one, first of all, politically, was necessary to obtain the consent of many of our members of our committee, because they were concerned about the fact that it is untested in this town, and we don't know who the hearing officer is. And for all those reasons, we're going to have a two-year window of opportunity to see how the rule is going to work. If it works well, I'm sure that the RTM won't have a problem with continuing with it. For those purposes, that's why we put it in the provision, so I would suggest that you leave it as is.
Further discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to amend item two by deleting the sunset provision. Mr. Van Kaiserling, District 8.
Ladies and gentlemen, happy holidays, first of all. On this amendment, I think it's cautious, but cautious to the point of unwise. If we're going to legislate, let's legislate properly. But to do a half-legislation, to me, seems so tentative and so temerous that we shouldn't bother in the first place. Either we believe in what this legislation says, or we don't. And that's perfectly right. Vote no on the whole thing if you feel that way. But the main reason, as I understand, and the explanations given to District and others on why we should put a sunset clause in, was the fear that the town authorities, basically the staff in inland wetlands, might abuse this power and apply it unequally, or, how should we say, capriciously, in such a way as to damage the average citizens. I think, first of all, that's not shown to be true. Our general staff of our town, they're professional, they're upstanding. They also have a board that we appoint that oversees them, and if they were to get outrageous, I'm sure that the board would have an avalanche of complaints, and the board would rein in such action if it were to happen, and I don't think it would happen in the first place. The second thing I would like you to think about is that if we sunset this two years, one of the problems we have with land management in this town is the confusion. Everybody says we didn't know the gun was loaded when they do something wrong. We're going to have a new set of inland-wetland legislation regulations that we put into place just recently. We're now going to put this kind of a teeth to it, if you like, that's going to go in, but it's only going to be for two weeks. By the time this is published out there and the people in the field get used to it, we're going to turn around and sunset it, and maybe take it up again, or maybe not, or take it a different way. And if you want to see a public that's confused, it's going to lead to a lot of difficulties and conflict because of misunderstanding. I think this is a poor operation. We always have the opportunity that if, in the future, inland-wetlands is so outrageous and so irresponsible as to cause the problem that the First Selectmen will be jumping up and down, saying, "We can't have this," that we, as a body, can change the ordinances applicable and remedy the factor if it becomes so severe. The third thing I would say to you is that for years and years, I have heard nothing but complaints about people looking for open space and saving our green and our land, and everything else they're worrying about, the overbuilding, those contractors, those developers we talk about over and over and over again, something's got to be done with these people. Well, now, something is being done, not for the good ones, but those who are truly errant and out of line and causing the really egregious problems that everybody complains about, whether it's the clearcutting in trees up in the mid-country or wherever. This is addressing it. Now, either you, as a town, mean what you complain about, or you're just going to be wishy-washy, willy-nilly, and say, "Yes, we're going to complain, 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 but we don't want to do anything about it." I think this is a time when you stand up and be counted on what your neighbors and friends have been telling you. I think this is when we make a clear-cut legislation. If it should be so bad in the future, we can revisit it on our own volition. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to amend. Mr. Bergweger, District 8.
I'm Kip Bergweger, District 8, and this is a rare opportunity for me to disagree with my colleague, Mr. Van Kaiserling. I favor the sunset clause. I was a member of the Legislative and Rules Committee and worked on this ordinance. I want to disclose that I currently am doing some work at my home under a wetlands permit. I've had a great relationship with the agency and the staff. We've had no problems whatsoever. But as I read through the ordinance, I could see places where some misunderstanding might leave a homeowner in a difficult situation. There is discretion built into this ordinance, not only as to who the identity of the hearing officer will be, but how the fines will be allocated depending on the type of work. There's not a schedule of violations and specified amounts that would apply to them. So it's a new experiment in this town, and we in the committee felt that it was important to give it a shot, give it a chance, and if it works, terrific. I can guarantee you that it won't take a year to reenact it if it's working, because it was a simple matter of just deleting the sunset clause. If it's not working, we should have a chance to look at it. And I think that the easiest way to do this, the most direct way, is to leave the sunset clause in. It's a useful tool, and we ought to use it. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Legislative and Rules Committee motion to delete the sunset Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Legislative and Rules Committee motion to amend item two, and proceed to poll your delegation. Did I say Leg...? I'm sorry. You know what? Just hang on one minute. I'm going to try and call for a voice vote on this. So hold off on the cards. If you are in favor of deleting the sunset clause, you should vote aye when I call for the vote. If you are opposed to deleting it and want to leave it in, you should vote no. All those in favor of the Land Use Committee motion to amend item two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Land Use Committee motion to amend item two, and proceed to poll your delegation. Now, we will need to know the result of that vote before voting on item two on its merits, so I ask that you please expedite the vote. We can continue discussion on item two. Is there any speaker interested in addressing us on the merits of item number two? Yes, Karen Vasiliotis, District 7.
First, I'd like to state upfront that I unequivocally support the purpose of the proposed ordinance that is before us tonight, but I cannot support the ordinance as it is written for the following reasons. First, I'd like to bring to your attention to page five of the call under letter H, which begins by stating a designated municipal official. My first question is, who designates the official? Is it the First Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen, the Chair of the Agency, some other person? The ordinance is silent on the matter. Additionally, with regard to the phrase "municipal official," shouldn't the ordinance state "town official"? Or by "municipal," are we to believe that New Canaan, Stanford, or any other municipality can designate the official? Second, I bring to your attention to letter K on the same page, under K1, which states that if the hearing officer determines the person is not liable, he/she shall enter his/her determination in writing. But the ordinance is silent as to where the writing goes. Is it deemed to be a business... Is it deemed to be a business record, as we state in the first paragraph for the citation? Does the person get a copy of the determination? Again, the ordinance is silent. If you go to K2, if the person is determined to be liable, the ordinance is silent as to whether the determination is in writing. It simply states that the hearing officer enters and assesses the fines and costs. Well, where is he entering this determination? Is it on their iPod, on their DVD, or a CD? And are copies distributed? And who gets copies? The person, the town, the court? Again, the ordinance is silent. Third, the ordinance goes to great lengths to define terms. However, the ordinance as written fails in many places to use the accepted designation of defined terms, namely, a capital letter at the beginning of the word. Person and violation are two examples of defined terms that are not capitalized throughout the body of the text. Well, this may seem nitpicking and petty to some. It is, quite frankly, sloppy drafting and should not be accepted by this body. I know that some members will argue that this ordinance has come to us before, that we need some sort of effective remedy to punish violators, and that we should simply pass the ordinance with or without the sunset clause and amend it later. Let me reiterate that no one wants this ordinance to pass more than I do. However, my response to the argument that we've seen it before, let's pass it, let's get the ordinance on the books, is that this will become a law of the town of Greenwich. With all due respect to the committees who reviewed this proposal, if we are to pass this law, we must get it right. I know that we've worked on this for over a year, that there have been many meetings on this matter, but I would like to move at this time that we postpone this item to the January meeting and that it be returned to the Legislative and Rules Committee to clean up the ordinance so that we can pass a law that will withstand legal scrutiny and that we get it right.
All right. I will interpret that as a motion to refer to the Legislative and Rules Committee with a reporting back date of our January meeting. Is that the intention?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to refer item two to our Legislative and Rules Committee with a direction that it report back on this item at our January 2008 meeting. Discussion? Mr. Boutell, can you please state your point of order?
Mr. Moderator, do we have the authority to cross sessions?
Yes, we do.
Back post home and return? I didn't just go to the committee.
Well, if that's a point of information, the answer is yes. If it's a point of order suggesting that that motion is not in order, the motion is not well taken. We do have that ability. Further, let's see. Discussion on the motion to refer. Mr. Wells, Chair of the committee to which this would be referred.
I think I'd just rather have you shoot me in the face than send this back to me. And it's probably already too late, but this is another reason why it's good to have a sunset clause, because if there are issues, then you can bring it back in a couple of years after we've had a chance to digest the law and to see if there are any real problems with these sorts of things. So please, vote this down.
Further discussion on the motion to refer. I will call for a voice vote. Those in favor of sending this back to Mr. Wells and his compadres, you should vote in favor. Those--
Moderator, point of order?
Who is speaking? Mr. Klein, please state your point of order.
Isn't there an amendment currently on the floor, too? We wait for the vote before you vote on this to refer it, so that if it is referred, at least we know what the body wants with that amendment?
Well, that is a good point. I will report the vote on the amendment. So have all the districts reported? All right. I will give you that vote before calling for the vote on the motion to refer. All right, I have the results of the vote on the Land Use Committee motion to delete the sunset provision from item two. Those in favor, seventy-four; opposed, ninety-four; abstaining, four. That motion has failed. Now, understand that when we refer an item to a committee, the committee has within its power to change that item. So it is true, we are sending it back with the sunset provision. The committee obviously can do with the draft ordinance as it sees fit if we were to adopt this motion to refer. So once again, if you are in favor of sending this to the Legislative and Rules Committee, you should vote in favor. If you are opposed to that, you should vote no. All those in favor of the--
Moderator, the motion to debate?
I thought we just did debate it. Mr. Wells got up and gave us his view, and I called for further debate, and there was no one else interested. Mr. Boutell?
Can you clarify that with instructions to bring back in January before I speak?
The RTM is directing the committee to finish its work and, well, at least to come back and report in January, to put something on our January call regarding this item.
My point, Mr. Moderator, is I will move to urge the body to vote against the motion, not because I don't think we still need to make corrections, but because it's completely unreasonable to ask Legislative and Rules to bring it back in less than a month, with the holidays upon us and a new committee. Districts held their organizational meetings, the new members haven't even met and elected a chairman yet. So how are they going to act? Well, you state that we can move stuff across sessions. Clearly, the new committee that would act on this to bring it back to us in January, those members won't be sworn unless they are--
Mr. Boutell, it gets better, at least for Mr. Wells. The deadline for the January meeting is prior to January 1st, so if we were to adopt this with the direction, then the current committee would need to, if they wanted to abide by our direction, they would need to act before December 31st.
Right. So, Mr. Moderator, I urge the members to vote against this motion, because the timing's all wrong. If you want to change the direction and give them discretion to bring it back to us six months from now, three months from now, fine, but there's no way it happens with those directions.
Ms. Foseliotis, you would like to change your motion?
Sure, why not? Mr. Moderator, I'd like to withdraw the motion that I made and state, or asked that we consider it for the March meeting instead. I think that would give us enough time.
I'm sorry. Say that again?
Withdraw the motion for January, refer it back to the--
So you would like to amend your pending motion?
I'm sorry, amend. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Now, it is not up to you now to decide whether to amend that motion, but--
Okay. That's why I thought I would withdraw and propose--
Once it has been moved and seconded and stated by the chair, it is now the purview of the body. But if there is no objection, then we could do what you are asking to allow you to do. Is there any objection to Ms. Foseliotis changing her motion with a report-back date rather than January/March? Is there any objection to that?
Yes.
Okay, there isn't. So rather than having her make this again with the March date, that amendment has been adopted upon unanimous consent. So we are now considering a referral, a motion to refer item two to the Legislative and Rules Committee with an instruction to put something on the call for the March 2008 meeting. If you are in favor of that, you vote yes. If you are opposed, you vote no. All those in favor of that motion to refer item two to the Legislative and Rules Committee, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has failed. All right. Further discussion on item two. It has not been amended by taking out the sunset provision. Further discussion, yes?
Hi, my name is Cheryl Smith, and I'm from District 12. And I, too, have some reservations about this idea, just because of some of the things I actually heard coming out of a report from the Land Use Committee. Apparently, it's admitted by the inland-wetlands that their maps are not accurate, they can't stand by them 100 percent, and that they tend to depend on reports of neighbors as to violations. Now, I can't tell you for sure if that's the case, but also, we know that state statutes change all the time. What if fines become extreme? We've had rules where you had to do things up to a wetland you couldn't build. Now, it's 100 to 200 feet. Things like that change. I've had experience where people, 20 years ago, invested in land way before they knew about vernal pools, and now they can't sell their land, they can't use it. It seems like we all do want to get the contractor, the big contractor who blatantly violates. But I'm concerned, especially in District 12, for the person who's not that, for the homeowner. This fine is for everyone and every, you know, the homeowner as well as the contractor. So I'm just concerned about how many people might we hurt in light of getting people that maybe could even afford these fines? The big guy may not really be that hurt, and to say, "Well, we'll wait two years and see how much damage is done," I don't know that we would run our own lives that way. Also, I would contest that inland-wetlands can already do some damage. I mean, it can make your property more difficult to sell if you know that you have some wetlands issues that came up that you didn't expect when you bought the property. In terms of neighbors, reporting on neighbors, we have seen that with the lobstermen, how the EPA got involved with them as a result of some people, some larger neighbors reporting that the lobstermen were in their way, and they didn't like that, and then they found out, "Oh, they don't have a permit." And I don't know that we like what happened to the lobstermen, and I just think about those people that can't afford to deal with all the regulations that will come up. So I just want you to consider that when you think about voting for this.
Further discussion on item two. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number two, and proceed to poll your delegation? While we are voting, we will continue. Item three, before item three, before I call for item three, I'd like to recognize Bob Tuthill, Chair of District Three. Yes, please. And the reason is, I understand that we may have a problem with number of voting cards tonight, so we-- Mr. Tuthill is going to suggest a combination of items for voting purposes. Mr. Tuthill?
Housekeeping item. I move to suspend the rules in order to combine items three, four, seven, and nine. Thank you.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded to combine, to suspend the rules in order to combine items three, four, seven, and nine for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine items three, four, seven, and nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is carried. So we will now take, we'll take up the first of the combined items and go through them before proceeding with the remaining separate items. So item three now comes before us. Joseph Cecilianno, Director Parks and Recreation.
Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, I offer item three, substitute resolution. Resolve that the Department of Parks and Recreation, Parks and Trees Division is authorized to accept gifts of, A, trees and planting from the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, Inc., B, donations from the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, Inc. for the purchase of trees to be planted on town property, such donations to become appropriations that the controller shall add to account A 829-53800.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of that resolution? Resolution on item three has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports? Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. Our committee met with Joseph Cecilianno to review this resolution last week. This resolution's regarding the Department of Parks accepting gifts of trees from the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. Joanne Messina, Executive Director of the Conservancy, was also with us. The premises is follows. The Conservancy, working with the Town of Greenwich Superintendent of Parks and Trees Warden, is working to establish a commemorative tree planting program to enable the planting of trees on municipal land in Greenwich. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy will accept donations from their donors in exchange for the planting of trees. The Conservancy will coordinate tree purchases with the Tree Department. The process will go as follows. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy will accept the donation from individuals or organizations. Trees and plantings will appear on separate invoices from the town. The Tree Department will pay the vendor invoices from account A 829-53800, entitled Botanicals. A copy of the invoice will be forwarded to the Greenwich Tree Conservancy for repayment. Checks received from the Conservancy will be placed in a holding account. Periodically, the Tree Department will request that the controller transfer funds retained in the holding account back to account A 829-53800. Details: donations of physical trees and plantings for the town are to be accepted only from the Tree Conservancy. It will be the vehicle for tree donations in town. Until the program is underway, it's hard to know what the extent of the participation will be with the purchase and plantings of trees, but it will be totally managed by the Tree Department on their planting schedule, et cetera. The goal: provide more trees for Greenwich. The Greenwich Tree Conservancy was organized in 2006. It became a 501(c)(3) in January of last year, and its mission is to preserve and enhance forestry and community trees in Greenwich. It currently has about 100 members. The BET approved this resolution at their November meeting with a vote of 1200. Further details of the commemorative tree program will come in the new year. This will be the first major program of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. Our vote was 901, with District Six, myself abstaining, because I'm a Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on item three. Item four now comes before us. Peter Crumbine, our selectman.
Resolved that the sum of $54,100 is hereby appropriated to the accounts numbers listed below, subject to the establishment of a not-for-profit corporation by Channel 79. Said appropriation to come from general fund balance.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item four has been moved and seconded. Greg Fruman with the report of our Town Services Committee.
Town Services took this item up on Tuesday. Our vote was 901, with Districts Two and Eleven absent. Paul Curtis presented this item to us. It's very similar to the item that was brought forward to us in, to the RTM in October. All the questions and concerns from the prior item have been clarified and addressed. The abstention was due to a conflict. The representative from District Nine currently works with Channel 79 and wanted to avoid any sort of conflict or the appearance of conflict. That's it.
Thank you. Pam Frederick with the report of our Finance Committee.
Item four was voted by the committee. It was presented by Joyella, who's the Chair of the Selectments Committee. We also had Stuart Ryder, who is a representative of the Area Nine Cable Council. We were pleased that we had such experienced executives available to provide us this public service. The resolution requires that the organization be set up as a nonprofit. That condition has been met. It was incorporated. Care of Ivy Barnum will be known as Friends of Greenwich Community TV. Will also become a 501(c)(3), at which time they will use that as the primary source of funding, fundraising, and the town will continue to provide certain administrative and government programming funding. One of the key benefits is that this will be, provide the town another source and a central source for emergency information. The appropriation is to fund staffing, which, instead of being retroactive, it will now fund the six remaining months of 2008. This staff member must be identified, and the Channel 79 welcomes recommendations from the RTM and the community. The other payment-- The other payment, the other use will be for the placement of a satellite dish. Almenelli is reviewing, will determine the viability of this. The committee voted 7-1-0, with Districts 4, 6, 10, and 11 absent. We had one dissenting vote that was opposed to the appropriation, given the huge number of town priorities which were viewed as being much more of a necessity and that this was viewed as a luxury. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item 4. Item 7 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? Mr. Crery, our Town Administrator.
Mr. Moderator, and members of the town meeting. Item Number 7, resolved that the town charter be amended to establish a process of appointment to the Parks and Recreation Board of three members per year with a three-year term.
Thank you. Will a member please move, this is a substitute resolution? Will a member please move the adoption of the substitute resolution? The substitute resolution on Item 7 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees on this item, beginning with Colleen Jenkins, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee took up this item at its last meeting, last Tuesday. At the meeting, Rick Wellington, Chair of Parks and Recreation, the Board of Parks and Recreation, presented a substitute resolution. I have copies of that resolution. It's the red and black markup. Unfortunately, what was in the call was substantially different than the substitute resolution, which made it difficult to do our work prior to our meeting. Mr. Wellington said that all of the changes were attributed to typographical errors. That said, the substitute resolution solves a longstanding problem that approximately 50 percent of the Parks and Recreation Board members' terms expired on the same date. And as you recall, we had a turnover of the majority of the board not so long ago, which has a certain effect. With the passage of this substitute resolution, the board members' lengths of terms change from four years, as is currently the case, to three years. As well, the nine-member board is broken into three classes. Each class has a separate expiration date, and the three classes are staggered every three years. The Appointments Committee made an amendment that Paragraph B become Paragraph G and vice versa. This amendment puts the duties of the boards before the discussion of the terms. This is a minor, non-substantive amendment. Our vote was 11-0-0. And since this is a combined item and that this is a minor substantive amendment, perhaps it's not important to pursue.
Well, no, we can amend items that have been combined.
Well, that's, that's an amendment.
The effect of combining is simply we will take one final vote on the merits, but we treat each of these separately as they come before us. So I just have a question. You were proposing to relabel B and G, right, to switch?
Swap them.
Swap them. So what would the new G be? Because I'm holding a document that I'm wondering if that's what has been put before us tonight.
B would become G.
I know, but could you read the language of your new G?
Then, is quite simply Paragraph B.
No, no, no. Could you just read it for me, please?
G would be, "In the event that there are vacancies."
All right, that's currently B?
Correct.
Okay. All right, fine. Because, never mind. All right. Let us, are you finished with your report?
I am finished.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon with the report of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. Rick Wellington, Chairman of the Board of Parks and Rec, joined our meeting last week to discuss this item, which is a resolution to set up a process whereby the appointment of board members can be changed to three-year terms. The board has nine members, and currently either four or five vacancies can occur at once. This large turnover is not conducive to an effective board or in the best interests of Greenwich. Therefore, it's resolved and approved by the First Selectman and the BOS to have three equal classes of three board members each for three-year terms, so that at any one time, only three members leave the board. The language you see here is to convert the members' terms over the next several years so that by 2011, you can begin the sequence of consecutive three-year terms. The Law Department has refined the language and made corrections, as you've heard from Colleen. By the way of background, the Board of Parks and Recreation is an advisory board to the First Selectman and became part of the town charter in 1972. There are no term limits for its members. Our committee did not have the very final modified language from the Law Department at the time of our meeting, but we agreed to accept the resolution, whether in its original or modified form, and therefore voted 10-0-0, with Districts 1 and 8 absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further committees that took this up? All right. Before I come back to appointments for its proposed amendments, I was handed a copy of this redlined version that, it's not clear to me if these actually are typos, but there were letters left out, and I will just offer that, and we, if there's no objection, we can adopt these changes if they are indeed necessary. The version that I have in line 2, this is Section 80 of the Charter, Subparagraph A, the second line reads, "Resident electors who?" The W is left out, so, and then at the end of that line, "Town," the W was also left out. In what is currently Subparagraph B, in the second line, there is a, there should be a closed parenthesis after the number 2. It currently has 2F, and that F should be deleted and replaced by a parenthesis. And in Subparagraph C, the first line, the third word is "for," F-O-U-R, the U was dropped. So is there any objection to making those typographical changes? Hearing none, those amendments are adopted upon unanimous consent. Ms. Jenkins?
Okay, the Appointments Committee moves that Paragraph B become Paragraph G and Paragraph G become Paragraph B.
All right, so the current Paragraph G begins, "The board shall make studies." Is that correct?
Correct.
And, okay. That, under, if that motion, this is on behalf of the Appointments Committee.
Committee.
So that does not require a second. That motion to amend Item 7 is now before us, simply to swap B and G. Discussion on that motion to amend. Mr. Brady, District 5.
Just a quick one. Indeed, Delta, the very last letter is for end B, closed around, so I assume that you as far as amendments could change that to G.
Okay. What Mr. Brady is suggesting is there is a reference in another paragraph to the current subsection B, so if we make this swap, that should also change from B to G. Further discussion on the proposed amendment. I will, I will call for a voice vote. This is on the motion of the, well, actually, is there any objection to the proposed amendment swapping B and G? Hearing none and absent objection, that motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent. Further, so discussion on Item 7. Mr. Boutell, District 8.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, I want to reference what was said earlier by two speakers. One, the Chairman of the Appointments Committee, referenced that we had one point in time where a majority of members of this board were turned over. I think what we're doing tonight is a very good thing of staggering the terms, but I want to go a little further. I'm not actually going to suggest action tonight, I'm going to support the item, but I want to take this opportunity to also reference the opening remarks that our First Selectman gave us, where he referenced that they have 34 nominations pending. He indicated they'd hope to act on one-third on Friday. Mentioned that our new Selectman, Ms. Lavery, served on the Selectmen's Committee to fill vacancies, but they're going to need to take more time. My point here is, I preceded Mrs. Jenkins as the Chairman of the Appointments Committee, and at that time, one of my big points is, why does every board and commission in town have to have the memberships expire on the 31st of March? One of the reasons the First Selectman and the Board of Selectmen find themselves, in the position they find themselves in, is we have a turnover of two members of the Board of Selectmen. They want to get up to speed, and yet they have all of these vacancies where they have to do the interviews, get the paperwork to appointments, to get all of these done on time, because every single board and commission expires on the 31st of March in this town. If we're going to open up the charter like we are tonight to deal with Parks and Rec, I'm not going to slow the process down, but I would urge that when we do this in the future, or perhaps the next Appointments Committee take it upon themselves as a charge. I know Mary Ferry spent hours documenting which person goes in which seat and when the terms expire. We really ought to consider not just staggering Parks and Rec so it's 3-3-3, but stagger the departments, so we act on some of them in March, on some of them in the summer, on some of them in the winter, so that rather than having a rush to fill all these seats in a one-month window, it can spread the process out. Parks and Rec is the classic example. If you, if you do it at the end of March, you're in the midst of the budget process, and so you could have key members going out. Parks and Rec would be one that would be great in September or October, as the end of the summer, season end.
Mr. Boutell, let's not do the work you're suggesting now. I think you've made, no, you've made, no, you've made a good point, but we don't-
I make the point that the next time we open up any of these appointment schedules, can we please, as an Appointments Committee, please, as a town body, consider changing the appointment term so that they don't all fall on the 31st of March?
Further discussion on Item 7. Mr. Von Kaiserling, District 8.
Ladies and gentlemen, being, I think, next to Frank Batiste, the longest-serving member of the Town Officers Appointments Committee, I'd like to weigh in on this. First of all, I'm very much in favor of this, and I hope you vote aye on it. On the general questions that were addressed about these staggering, you remember the terrible time we went through two summers ago with the Parks and Rec Board? I don't think any of us want to revisit that kind of situation again if we can avoid it, and this certainly remedies it, and so I support my Chairman on that. We have this Chairman, Ms. Jenkins, Mr. Boutell before, myself, and my time, all have pressed for these staggered terms. This is something for the future we can do. I think we probably will find favorable agreement on the administration side, from the people of having to labor on that side. It is unreasonable to ask them to come up, but from the time they're elected in November 1st or 2nd, by January 1st, all of these appointments, it's impractical, it's impossible, it's frankly ridiculous, we may need to change the charter. So I think we need to give them a little latitude, and I think it's valuable for them to do this all at once if they can do it, but it's certainly not necessary for us to break their back on this one item. So I would ask you just to pass this at this point, and we'll move on to the other areas during the next administration, which hopefully in the next two years, we'll see some very positive changes in how the process happens. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item 7? All right, this is one of the combined items, so we will first take up Item 9, but I do point out, since this is a proposed amendment of our charter, it does require an affirmative vote of a majority of the membership of the RTM to pass. Item 9 now comes before us. Doug Wells, Chair of the Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, resolved that the following representative town meeting date for the 2008-2009 term is changed from Tuesday, January 15, to Monday, January 14, 2008.
Thank you. Do we have any reports on this?
No.
No?
We didn't take a vote, we just wanted to tee it up, to give it up to the people here to decide which date they wanted to pick.
Thank you. Mr. Fruman?
Well, Town Services took this up, and that's it. 10-0-0.
Thank you. Will the District, discussion on Item 9. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combined Items 3, 4, 7, and 9, and proceed to poll your delegation? I do have the results of the vote on Item Number 2, and that was the ordinance regarding inland wetlands. Those in favor, 152. Opposed, 15. Abstaining, 7. That item has carried. Item 5 now comes before us. Mr. Menarski, our Town Controller.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, RTM members. Item Number 5, resolved to adopt an ordinance pursuant to Section 7-450B of the General Statutes of the Connecticut Revision of 1958, revised to January 1, 2007, the Connecticut General Statutes, whereas the Town of Greenwich desires to establish and fund a trust as indicated in the call.
All right, and this is a subs, well, this is a substitute resolution, is that correct? Mr. Menarski? It's not what's in the call?
That's correct.
All right. This is a substitute resolution that was made available tonight with the final changes. Is that correct, Mr. Fox? Okay. So it's not what was in the call, but incorporates changes suggested by our committees. Okay. Is there a second? The substitute resolution on Item 5 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this? Who's going to go first? Doug Wells, Chair of our Leg-
I thought Labor Contracts is going to go first on this.
Okay. Joan Caldwell with the report of our Labor Contracts Committee.
Mr. Moderator, members of town meeting, the Labor Contracts Committee took this up when we met earlier in the week, actually, a week ago tonight. Our feeling was that this resolution should be approved. Certainly, the steps that the Board of Estiment and Taxation are taking seem prudent to us. The idea of putting the money into a trust where we might be able to get a better return on it made sense. Secondly, it's protected money, and it isn't keeping with the kind of planning that we normally do. Our vote on this was 5 in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, this item first appeared before our committee in October, but it was withdrawn by its proponents prior to the October RTM meeting to address a number of concerns that the Finance Committee and Legislative and Rules Committee had with respect to the first edition of this resolution. In the interim, I understand an ad hoc committee was formed to rewrite and incorporate many of the issues brought up by the two committees. At our meeting last Monday evening, we had Natalie Welch from Shipman &amp; Goodwin, outside counsel, who was retained to draft this ordinance, together with Abby Wadler and Wayne Fox from the Law Department, as well as Arthur Norton of the BET, to address our concerns. Attorney Welch first made us aware of a total of seven language changes that had been voted on and approved by the Labor Contracts Committee in its meeting, so we first took up those revisions that were brought to us by Ms. Welch, and we voted to adopt and approve those revisions by a vote of 11-0-1. Those revisions that were made by Labor Contracts are part of the substitute resolution that has been handed to you this evening. Our committee then considered a motion to revise the Declaration of Trust, which is found in the attachment for Item 5, specifically considering whether to delete the requirement that any amendments to the Declaration of Trust seek and obtain the approval of the RTM before those amendments could be made effective. After some discussion, it was moved to delete the requirement for approval. However, that motion was defeated by a vote of 3-9-0, so that Article 7 of the Declaration of Trust remains as it is printed. We then discussed the qualifications for membership on the OPEB Board, which is referred to in the last sentence of Paragraph 5 of the call. to in the last sentence of paragraph five of the call, where it says the members of said OPEB Board shall be residents of the Town of Greenwich. Some of the members of our committee thought that membership to the OPEB Board should be limited to electors of the town, however, nobody moved to make that change. We then voted as to legal order, as revised by the Labor Contracts Committee. The vote was ten in favor, none opposed, with two abstentions.
Thank you. Pam Frederick, Chair of our Finance Committee.
That's probably one of my longer. The Finance Committee met last Monday and voted seven, one, zero to adjourn, reconvene today to give further review to this trust and the language, given the permanence of the trust. And so we voted to meet again tonight to give further consideration. We made several recommendations, which are, all of which are reflected in the substitute resolution, and so that is what's before you this evening. The things I wanted to take note of, the ordinance and trust provides a number of benefits to the town, including giving greater investment flexibility. It also gives the town greater flexibility in the selection of its actuarial assumptions. If we did not make this change to the trust, that these assumptions would be mandated and have a significant impact on both the size of the contribution as well as the reported size of the town liability. Lastly, we felt that there were several improvements in the language since the October meeting, one being there was more RTM involvement, that being limited to approval of amendments as noted by Legislative and Rules, as well as approval of any termination of the trust. There was also clearer delineation of responsibilities between the BET, the town, the trustee, as well as the RTM, and significant improvements in what we saw as clear governance of the BET having overall control of the trust. There was a negative noted, which I will point out, and that being the inability of that, once the trust is put in place, the town would subsequently be unable to access the funds of the trust. Now, while that limits some financial flexibility, it also provides protection to the funds in that creditors could no longer have, invade the trust assets either, and the retirees would therefore have greater confidence that their future OPEB benefits would be better So, in general, the Finance Committee was very much in support of this item. We voted this evening, given the changes that we made, many of which were changes in legal language. There are some things that we thought were, it was very important for us to be diligent in our review of this, given that it will not come before us, and given the permanence of the document, we wanted to ensure that we were comfortable with the legal language. And we voted in favor of this item nine, zero, zero, this evening, in support of the substitute resolution. Districts two, four, and eleven were absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item five. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, item number five, and please proceed to poll your delegation? I have the results of the vote on our combined items. Those were items three, four, seven, and nine. Those in favor, one sixty-eight; opposed, one; abstaining, one. All of those items, including the proposed charter change, have carried. Item number six now comes before us. Greg Fruman, Chair of our Town Services Committee.
This item has been amended, a redline version was circulated, and the redline version is, hopefully as it appears, the, how should I present this?
It is not what's on our call?
On the call has been amended to take care of five missing paragraphs, letters. There were just minor errors.
Okay.
So-
So it's a substitute resolution?
A substitute resolution with five silly changes.
All right. As this, and that has circulated to our members?
Yes, you've actually forwarded it.
Thank you. As this comes from one of our committees, it does not require a second and is now currently before us. May we have the reports on this item? Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
This item came before the RTM a couple of months ago as an ordinance pursuant to a petition of twenty registered voters, and at that earlier meeting, the RTM voted to postpone the matter indefinitely so that one or more of our committees could help to redraft this legislation. It now comes back to us in the form of a sense of the meeting resolution as opposed to an ordinance. It has been redrafted as a sense of the meeting resolution because of the opinion of our town attorney, which says that the RTM is restricted by our charter from passing an ordinance that directs a town department from ministering its affairs in accordance with RTM dictates. In this case, the resolution requires that the town departments, the IT department and the town clerk, do certain duties. The, the, I have them all down, it's okay. The changes that were referred to by Mr. Fruman are changes that, one of which his committee took up and we adopted it, and so I would, at the appropriate time, make those, what amount of grammatical changes at the appropriate time.
Well, is, Mr. Wells, have those been incorporated in the substitute resolution?
Yes, they have been. They are in there.
So then, it's not necessary?
I didn't know that it had been circulated. If it's been circulated, we don't have to address them, I guess.
Okay. That is what is before us now, the substitute.
Yes. Our vote on this item was twelve, zero, zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Greg Fruman with the Town Services Committee report.
Our vote on this item was ten, zero, zero, on the substitute resolution with Districts two and eleven absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item six. Will the District Chairs please mark your voting cards, item number six, and proceed to poll your delegation? And the final item to come before us is item number eight. May we have that resolution? Josh Brown, who is Chairman of the Special Committee that brings this to us.
Item number eight, there is a substitute resolution that was mailed to everybody. There is one minor edit to that substitute resolution, which is the correct spelling of "meeting" in the first sentence. Otherwise, it is what it is.
All right. That being brought to us on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second and is currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that consider this? Franklin Blumer, who's going to go first here?
I got the education-
Bob Brady with the report of our Education Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, members guests. The Education Committee met jointly with Land Use, Legislative and Rules, and Public Works Committees to hear the Special Committee presentation on this item and to ask questions of it. We met last Monday in the Cone Room. We adjourned to vote separately. Ten districts were represented, Districts two and ten were unrepresented. Josh presented the item for the Special Committee, explained its purpose is to identify and recommend the actions needed to link the capital budget to the Plan of Conservation and Development, a goal expressed in the October 2006 Sense of the Meeting Resolution on the subject, calling for identification of projects in the POCD. Josh explained that the SOMAR does not, this Sense of the Meeting Resolution does not and is not intended to be the complete instruction set to implement the desired linkage, rather, it's an outline which identifies the actions needed to be taken by various town bodies. He was clear that additional work must be done, and effective implementation requires the active, positive participation of the Select Board, Planning and Zoning, the BET, and other town departments. He said the Special Committee expects that the moderator will appoint a subsequent Special Committee to assist in and monitor the implementation of these items in the next RTM term. The Education Committee voted ten in favor, none opposed, none abstaining, with Districts two and ten absent, to recommend adoption of the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Franklin Blumer with the report of our Land Use Committee.
The Land Use Committee was, of course, part of the joint meeting, which was held last Monday evening, and we received the presentation of Josh Brown, who chaired the Special Committee. He went through the twelve recommendations. He also made the point that Mr. Brady has just described, that the adoption of this resolution would be followed, or hopefully followed, by a dialogue between the concerned town officials and representatives of the RTM, presumably a reconstituted Special Committee, on how best to achieve the objectives of the twelve recommendations. In summary, these are: to make the POCD, the Plan of Conservation and Development, and the Capital Plan consistent with each other; to ensure that the Capital Plan is prepared after consideration of the full range of the town's needs; to make preparation and implementation of both the POCD and the Capital Plan more transparent and more responsive to all branches of town government and to the public; and lastly, to keep the POCD up to date by reviewing it, monitoring its implementation, and amending it where necessary, all on a regular basis. The recommendations are premised on the idea that the POCD is the starting point for capital planning. It is the input to the process, which we call the CIP process, which produces the Capital Plan. The key recommendation is the first one, which says that the Capital Plan will schedule funding for the capital projects that would meet all of the goals of the POCD unless a determination is made that a particular project should not be funded. The POCD is advisory. Our charter makes the first selectman an elected official responsible for setting priorities, but while the POCD doesn't require anything, it is comprehensive. It looks at all of the town's needs. Naturally, all of them cannot be met at once, so priorities must be set, and some projects have to be deferred, even beyond the fifteen-year term of the Capital Plan. Recommendations include a procedure by which those projects are not lost sight of. Our vote on the main motion, as amended by a thirteenth recommendation, which I will describe in a moment, which is the subject of a motion that the Land Use Committee wishes to offer, was five in favor, six opposed, with one abstention. The districts voting no were one, three, four, nine, eleven, and twelve. The delegate from District Two abstained because he wanted to hear more debate before taking a position. There was no consistency among the reasons given for the negative votes. Some were simply opposed to better planning. Others acknowledged the need for better planning. Others acknowledged the need for better planning, but thought, for various reasons, that the Special Committee's recommendations were not the right way to go about it. I'll describe the reasons given by three of the six. The delegate from District One, Richard Holleran, is opposed to planning because he believes that it will result in more projects, which in turn will lead to higher taxes. The delegate from District Three, Mike Aurelia, supports better planning, but feels the procedure proposed by the Special Committee won't work because the town departments will be unwilling to cede authority to other agencies or to the public, and will carry on as before. We can only hope that he's wrong. District eleven was represented at our meeting by Harry Labine. He gave lots of reasons for opposing it. Essentially, he thinks that planning in Greenwich is working fine as it is and doesn't need to be improved. He gave other reasons why, if planning did need to be improved, the Special Committee's recommendations were wrong. But the reason he emphasized most was the Planning and Zoning's heavy workload, dealing with zoning applications that have to be resolved in a relatively short fixed timeframe, leaving little time for planning. The Special Committee's report makes it clear that it is aware of P&amp;Z's heavy workload and the fact that it lacks sufficient staff to perform its planning role effectively. The report of a special panel that studied planning and zoning ten years ago, the so-called Blue Ribbon Panel, reached the same conclusion. However, the Special Committee did not feel that recommending additional staff for P&amp;Z was within its charge, and put a recommendation on the subject in the appendix, which is at the back of the report, listing recommendations outside of its charge. That's the last page of the report. The Land Use Committee, however, felt that it was not constrained by the charge to the Special Committee, and that it was appropriate for the RTM Committee, having oversight over planning and zoning, to look at the impact of the Special Committee recommendations on the commission. We felt that devoting greater resources to planning would, on balance, save the town money because tax dollars would not be spent on projects that would not be funded because, for example, they lacked popular support, as was the case with the Benedict Place tiered parking garage. Accordingly, we offered to, we voted to offer an amendment to the resolution, reading as follows, and this would be a thirteenth recommendation in the third whereas clause that would read as follows: that planning and zoning be reorganized to separate long-term planning from day-to-day operations, and that a new position of assistant town planner be created to be responsible for all long-range planning, including the POCD and for its implementation, as recommended in the report of the Blue Ribbon Panel dated June twenty-nine, nineteen ninety-eight. Just to be clear, this is not a recommendation that planning be separated from planning and zoning. The new position would be within the Planning and Zoning Commission and would report to the town planner. The vote on the motion to amend was nine in favor, two opposed, with one abstention. Districts one and twelve voted against, District Three abstained. Following the committee reports, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to offer that motion on behalf of the Land Use Committee.
All right. So did I understand that the vote, after you amended it in that regard, the committee voted?
Five in favor, six opposed, one abstention.
Five in favor, six opposed. Thank you. All right. Who's next? Doug Wells with the report of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, we took up the substitute resolution last Monday evening in a joint session with Land Use, Education, and Public Works. Presenting on behalf of the Special Committee was Josh Brown. Mr. Brown, again, joined us in the Legislative and Rules Committee meeting later that evening, answered questions, and participated in the discussion concerning this resolution. Because this is a sense of the meeting resolution, there's no real question concerning its legal order because it is merely advisory and aspirational in nature, reflecting the wishes of the RTM as it relates to the POCD and the CIP process. Our vote as to legal order was therefore eleven, zero, zero, District One absent. We also wanted to take a vote as to the merits to show our support for this resolution and what it's trying to accomplish. Our vote there was also eleven, zero, zero.
Thank you. Robert Cavie with the report of our Public Works Committee.
After the joint committee discussion, the Public Works Committee adjourned to the Engineering Conference Room to discuss the item, item eight, and Public Works Commissioner Lloyd Hubs attended as well. Initial discussion pointed out the concern for more regulation and the wordy nature of the item. Following this, some points were made concerning the burden that the item poses on the RTM and P&amp;Z. On the latter point, not only would there be a need for at least part-time headcount to help manage the additional planning burden, there were some points made of the overwhelming time P&amp;Z spends on zoning in a reactive mode that prevents effective strategic planning. In the joint meeting, points were made to give support for the staffing, as noted from the previous Blue Ribbon Panel findings, to a point at that meeting, to a point about even separating from planning and zoning. This recommendation for a partition of P&amp;Z was not part of the Special Committee's report and was specifically rejected by the committee as an addition to the twelve Special Committee whereas recommendations as included on the RTM December tenth call resolution number eight. The group discussed the reality that the CIP process has become partly cloaked in secrecy with verifiable transparency problems. Furthermore, some clear examples of CIP process ranking irregularities were noted. Points were made that historical evidence shows the town's inability to properly identify, plan, and execute long-term capital planning without under- without undue political influence. Finally, the inability to set our capital planning needs on an even keel for the long haul has only increased project costs, lost important resources, and compounded problems associated with emergency capital expenditures that could have and should have been planned for based on the life expectancy and strategic planning and development needs of the town. The item appeared to the committee to present a plan by which a formal framework can be established to help link the separate functions of the decennial POCD to the annual budget process akin to two rails of a train track joined by railroad ties, the ties ultimately being the final process established to make sure the POCD and our actual projects move, in effect, in unison into the horizon for a better Greenwich. The committee voted nine in favor, two opposed, no abstentions, with District 2 absent. The no votes from Districts 3 and 10 indicated concern, as noted above, about more of a burden on the RTM and the difficulties placed on the P&amp;Z.
Thank you. Randall Huffman, Chair of our Budget Overview Committee.
Good evening. The BOC took up this matter at its regular meeting last Tuesday. After discussion, it was noted that members of the BOC felt that this was an important step in advancing planning in our budgeting process and in our consideration of capital projects. BOC voted six in favor, none opposed, with one abstention. That abstention expressed a desire for more time to study the complete report, and there were five districts that were absent, Districts 2, 3, 4, 9, and 11. Thank you.
Thank you. Before -- oh, Mr. DiMarco, report of our Transportation Committee.
The Transportation Committee met voluntarily on Tuesday evening. One of the reasons was to take up item 8, which it recognized as a series of recommendations aimed at creating consistency with the capital plan, between the capital plan and the POCD as a means of improving town planning. The Transportation Committee has been strongly in favor of better town planning, and its members collectively and individually were instrumental in bringing the need for better planning to where it stands before us tonight. As such, several members of the Transportation Committee volunteered to serve on that special committee. Two members did actually serve on the committee and explained to the Transportation Committee at our meeting that the thrust of the resolution offered by the special committee, and having attended the Monday evening joint meeting and follow-up by the Land Use Committee, also explained the intent of the additional recommendation offered as an amendment by the Land Use Committee, and the reasons for the surprising outcome of the voting by that committee. The Transportation Committee focused on the resolution from the special committee, identifying the objectives behind the 12 recommendations. It then considered the concerns raised the previous evening, and after further discussion concluded that it agreed with the sense of the meeting resolution offered by the special committee, and voted 8-0 in support of item 8. With Districts 1, 4, 11, and 12 absent, the Transportation Committee did not vote on the Land Use Committee amendment.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, you want to give a report?
As a matter of protocol, do you want to receive a report from me as the chairman of the committee, or take up the motion to amend first?
Yeah, I will offer you that opportunity, Mr. Brown. Josh Brown, who was chairman of this special committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, fellow members, and guests. To the substitute resolution, wanted to just bring your attention to a couple of things. One is, the focus of the committee was on how to link the capital planning with the POCD. The results that we put forward were grouped, really focusing on the interest of capital planning, and to be sure how they can, if not specifically identified in the POCD, point to and support the goals that are put forward in the POCD. We took these from discussions with various leadership of the town departments, various conversations and meetings that we had, as well as review of certain materials of what other towns and cities are doing as it relates to their POCD or equivalent in their capital planning processes, gaining ideas and suggestions of possible ways forward. Our focus centered around how we can improve the POCD, basically for how to improve the timeliness and the recurring review that it should be going through, how to best link the capital projects with the goals of the POCD, and, as Mr. Tessie indicated earlier, how to open up the CIP process to more awareness, greater awareness. Want to bring your attention that it is a sense of the meeting resolution. It is providing guidance. It is providing a direction to continue discussions with the various town bodies' leaders on how these recommendations can be implemented. It's not a punch list of do the following 17 activities. It is take these concepts and working with the leaders in town on how to best implement them. We've organized them into three areas, some charter, some suggested charter changes, some changes to the CIP process, including the committee's makeup, as well as how to deal with the POCD and how to encourage its routine review. Want to focus on that voting for this means that you want further discussion on this topic, that you'd like further change to be considered, and to work with leaders across the town to have them implemented, that the CIP projects do support the POCD, that the POCD does need more routine review. In looking at voting against this, I'm thinking that if you were to vote against this, that you'd be comfortable, and you'd be voting in favor of the current process, which may not be well-connected, may not be well-suited for the continuing challenges and making sure that all of town is aware of the projects that are coming forward and the ranking of them. I will speak later to the amendment of land use to insert a 13th recommendation. I do ask that you support the recommendation. We've received a handful of suggested enhancements to the language. I will be offering, and have already offered, to the moderator to serve in the next term, as he would see fit, to help move these recommendations forward and to work with leadership in town to do that. So, again, I would ask that you support the report of the committee. I would like to take the opportunity to thank many of the committee members who you've already heard from, as they are chairman of the various committees, beginning with Franklin Vincent, Bob Kabe, Peter Berg, who you haven't heard from, Swan Grant, Rick Kroll, and Randall Huffman, but would also like to thank Louisa Stone for her invaluable support and insights to our discussions and deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before calling upon Mr. Blumer, I do want to report the vote. The vote's outstanding. The vote on item number five, which was the OPEB trust, those in favor, 167, opposed, 3, abstaining, 0. That item is carried. Item six, which was the sense of the meeting resolution regarding notice of public meetings, those in favor, 164, opposed, 0, abstaining, 0. That item has carried also. And just one final reminder, Joan Caldwell, our moderator pro tem, is coordinating the compilation of information for next term's RTM directory, which the League of Women Voters publishes, and she has asked that all district chairs get those forms that were passed out earlier tonight on contact information back to her before you leave tonight. All right. Franklin Blumer, offering an amendment to item 8 on behalf of the Land Use Committee.
On behalf of the Land Use Committee, I would like to offer the following. I move that the following changes be made to the third whereas clause. At the end of clause 11, delete the word "and." At the end of clause 12, insert the word "and," and insert a new clause 13, reading as follows: "That P&amp;Z be reorganized to separate long-term planning from day-to-day operations, and that a new position of assistant town planner be created to be responsible for all long-range planning, including the POCD and its implementation, as recommended in the report of the Blue Ribbon Panel dated June 29, 1998."
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second. Is there a need to reread that proposed amendment?
No.
All right. There is a request. The Land Use Committee is proposing to add the following paragraph 13 to the third whereas clause of the substitute resolution, and it would read as follows: "That P&amp;Z be reorganized to separate long-term planning from day-to-day operations, and that a new position of assistant town planner be created to be responsible for all long-range planning, including the Plan of Conservation and Development and for its implementation, as recommended in the report of the Blue Ribbon Panel dated June 29, 1998." Discussion on that proposed amendment. Mr. Brown.
Mr. Moderator, fellow members, and guests, I would ask that you vote down the committee motion of Land Use to insert the 13th item. It had been discussed within our special committee. It was, if you look all the way to the back of the document, on a series of recommendations, these are ideas that we had debated and discussed within the committee and chose not to bring them forward. We didn't feel that they were necessarily part of our charge. I would ask that you vote against the item to amend.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment to item 8. Irv Porter, District 6.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I urge you to vote against the amendment, and the reason is in support of what you heard Josh in the committee said. That's not to say that I'm not in favor of there being an assistant town planner. That's not to say that I don't believe that there needs to be training, not only for those or direct reports to the first selectmen, but those that are reporting to those that report to the direct reports. Planning is a culture. If you grew up in a corporate world, you realize that planning is something that all managers have to do. Planning is also a skill, and you might be, as a planner, on one end of the continuum at a 1 or a 2, but that doesn't mean that you can't learn to be a better planner. Until that culture is properly represented by the Board of Selectmen, by the BET, by the RTM, and the entire town is pressed into action to be more of a proactive planner, then we'll be stuck with where we are now. People think about planning in the context that it's budgeting. Budgeting is work that a manager does after they plan, not before. So, in the spirit of the work that the special committee has done, I happen to believe that all of you will continue to press in the direction of the town being more effective in planning. That may evolve until the point where you have an assistant town planner, but the work that's been done thus far, in my judgment, shouldn't be confused with those issues. That should be held for debate at another time.
Further discussion on the Land Use Committee motion to amend. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, Land Use Committee motion to amend item 8, and proceed to poll your delegation? We will need the results of this vote before taking our final vote of the evening. But while we are voting, we can continue discussing item 8. Anyone interested in offering comments on item 8? Dr. Carlson, District 1.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM, over the past year, democracy in Greenwich seems to have reasserted itself somewhat. This item that you have before you is along the same lines. We have had a process for the CIP, which seemed to have quite exclusive membership to it, and was very closely handled by the first selectmen. I would just like you to look at items number 11 and 12. You have a statement that the CIP committee membership be broadened so that at least 50% of the voting power of the committee be persons who are not town employees. I say that is very healthy for government in this town. Number 12, that the CIP committee operate openly, in full compliance with freedom of information standards, with its meetings noticed appropriately in advance and open to the public and a record kept and made available to the public, or any action it takes, including the scoring of the committee of individual projects. All this is good for democracy. It is healthy. The idea of democracy is that things are done by many people and openly. Town officials are servants of the people. Thank you.
Further discussion on item 8. Yes, sir. To be followed by Bob Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I oppose this, but I must say at the outset that I strongly support good planning. So, we're clear on that point. I oppose it, and fully realizing it is a sense of meaning resolution only. It is not a fixed list of things which must be done. It is a step along a path, I can understand, but I think these concerns should be expressed. I do not think that this will materially improve planning. It will definitely add a complexity to the POCD process, which was never intended for this purpose, for this proposed use. Steps, I believe, can be taken to achieve essentially what is desired here, namely, a direct and continuing participation by the RTM in the POCD process. I have to go back to a fundamental point, which is, what is the POCD? The special committee's report says on page 7, "A plan," in quotes, "is a method or scheme for achieving certain goals," and thus, by definition, it should contain a significant level of detail concerning many of the projects needed to implement its goals. I agree. It's a fine definition of a plan. The problem is, this does not describe the POCD. In short, the POCD is not a plan. So, what is it? Our charter is specific on the question. To read the critical language only in section 94 of the charter, "The POCD shall show the commission's recommendation for the most desirable use of land, et cetera, for the most desirable density of population, et cetera, for the general location, relocation, and improvement of public real property, for the general location and extent of public utilities, and such other recommendations as the Planning and Zoning Commission may recommend." In short, by design, the POCD is an advisory or visionary document. It deliberately describes the forest and avoids the trees. It does not contain methods or schemes which would be proposed to be imported into it by the resolution before you. A lot of fundamentals which should be understood, and that is, the POCD is not binding on anyone. It's not binding on the Planning and Zoning Commission, on the RTM, certainly not on the BET. The point is that the POCD was never designed or intended to do what it has proposed to do tonight, or what is proposed in the future to be done. In essence, what this will do will tie tightly the CIP process to the POCD. It will put restrictions, I think, on the flexibility of the first selectman, who is ultimately charged with this preparation of the budget. I have never had said to me exactly what we're trying to fix by this proposal. What is the problem that's been What is the problem that's being cured by this? I've never heard an example, one example, of the method which is now used producing something which is harmful for the town. The report does have one excellent idea, I think, which is the creation of an implementation committee. This would have a representation from the RTM, the BET, excuse me, planning and zoning and the public, and closely monitor what the POC recommendations are trying to achieve and whether or not they're being in fact accomplished, and report back to all the bodies involved. In other words, you will get a continuous report as to what is being done. On page 11 of the report is the following. "The procedure by which the CIP committee applies these criteria is not open and few meetings are held. The CIP committee that ranked capital projects for 207,08 budget met twice and kept no record of how individual members ranked different projects. Most of the documentation is not available." I find those statements curious in view of the requirements of the FOI, but nevertheless, I'm sure, Mr. Tessie, who favors transparency, it's easy to have additional meetings. It's easy to have documentation made available and to make it fully transparent as to what's The, I must make one other comment, two more comments. One is, the plan refers to what happened in Shelton, Connecticut. I've not mastered the details of the Shelton plan. However, briefly reading it, it seems clearly to me that it's not relevant to Greenwich. However, we have a unique situation here. The Shelton plan was largely the result of work by Planometrics, who was currently employed by Greenwich to help it with its POCD, and we can ask them, to what extent does the Shelton experience have any relevance to Greenwich? I do not think it has any, but we've got experts who can tell us. We have eliminated the comment or the resolution which would add employees. I must comment on that, namely that the likelihood of the BET funding two more full employees of Greenwich is very remote. I've had the experience of trying to get an assistant for Jim Maloney, the zoning enforcement officer, for three or four years. The BET always turned you down, the reason being the veteran rule.
Mr. Labine, that issue has been voted on, and I do have the results. I'll just indicate.
Okay.
The motion to amend to add that paragraph 13, those in favor, 39, opposed, 130, abstaining one. So that motion to amend has failed.
All right. Well, then, the only comment I have there is, sooner or later, to achieve what is proposed here, which includes an annual review of major sections of the POCD, which will, with all the public hearings and the research and so forth involved, will require additional personnel. There's no question about it, and I don't think it's appropriate for this body to say to Diane Fox, all you have to do is work a little harder. And whether they'll be made available, I do not know. On balance, I do not think what is proposed here, going back to my original point, is what the POC was designed for. I think we can achieve the objectives by other means, including the Implementation Committee and opening up some of these committees, which allegedly have been secret, which I doubt that'll continue, and this body will be fully informed as to what is being done, and we can react appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob Richardson of District Ten.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. I come from with a somewhat different perspective. I think the planning function in this town needs serious improvement, and most importantly, I think we need to tie the CIP process more closely to the POCD, not necessarily the reverse. But it's very important that the CIP process and the results of it are more synchronized with the Plan of Conservation and Development, and that plan needs a careful going over on a regular basis, not simply a restatement or a re-edition, a new look at it every 10 years. I think the special committee headed up by Mr. Brown has done an excellent job. They've come up with a document which is not perfect, but it is, makes a major contribution to advancing the goal of getting a better planning function overall in town. I would strongly urge your support for what they have proposed. It won't be implemented the way the Sense of the Meaning Resolution has it stated, that, as Mr. Blumer has indicated, and I think Mr. Brown has indicated, is more or less a working agenda on how to put together something that is better within the town government. And so I recommend it to you. On a personal note, Mr. Moderator, if you would just indulge me for a moment, I would like to thank you and all the members of this body for your very kind recognition of the members of the special committee this evening. I'm sure that they all appreciate it very much, as do I. This is my last meeting with this body. It has been my great privilege to serve with you. It's my honor to be able to even speak to you now as a member of this body, and I thank you very much for all your kindnesses to me and to the committee and to all that we've tried to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, for all your hard work and excellent leadership. All right, further discussion on item eight. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number eight, and proceed to poll your delegation? That being the final matter to come before us tonight, we will await the results of the vote before proceeding to adjourn the meeting. We have the result of our final vote on item number eight, the Sense of the Meeting Resolution Regarding the Plan of Conservation and Development. Those in favor, 140, opposed, 20, abstaining, two. That item has carried. That being the last item to come before us tonight, absent objection, this meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Thank you to those who are leaving us, and for all your good service, and have a safe trip home.